Evening, welcome to this November 2nd, 2020, meeting of the Norfolk City Council. I will call the meeting to order and to begin, call your attention to the Open Meetings Act, posted here in the council chambers. If you now please join me in rising for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, please.
Granquist.
Here.
Langy.
Here.
Merrill.
Weeblehouse.
Here.
Muren.
Here.
Jackson.
Here.
Clausen.
Here.
File.
Here.
Okay, with that, I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion in second, if no discussion, roll call, please.
Granquist.
Yes.
Langy.
Yes.
Weeblehouse.
Yes.
Muren.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Clausen.
Yes.
File.
Yes.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Would entertain a motion to approve the full agenda?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second. Motion in second, if no discussion, roll call, please.
Granquist.
Yes.
Langy.
Yes.
Weeblehouse.
Yes.
Muren.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Clausen.
Yes.
File.
Yes.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Okay, that takes us to item number seventeen on the city council agenda under special presentations. We'll now read a proclamation for November 2020 as Read Aloud to a Child Month. Whereas literacy is the fundamental building block of all learning and is essential to the growth and success of every child in our city. And reading to children enlarges their vocabulary and enhances their listening skills, thereby fostering intellectual growth and a more positive attitude toward reading. And reading to a child is a simple and priceless act that benefits both adult and child, positively contributing to family literacy and strengthening the bond between a parent and child. And when parents assume the responsibility for children's literacy, making a commitment to reading for fifteen minutes a day, children become more healthy, resilient, and inquisitive. And Read Aloud to Your Child for Twenty Minutes a Day is a nationally recognized program that has been in existence for more than twenty-five years. And Read Aloud Norfolk, the Norfolk Public Library, Norfolk Area Schools, and other organizations representing parents, teachers, librarians, and concerned citizens advocate for reading aloud to children because it fosters healthy interaction between adults and children. And reading aloud to children will enhance family literacy and the well-being of young people throughout our city. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Josh Moaning, Mayor of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, by the power vested in me, do hereby proclaim November 2020 as Read Aloud to a Child Month in the City of Norfolk and the surrounding area and encourage all parents, teachers, librarians, and other caring adults to read aloud to a child every day. Is there anyone here this evening to receive the proclamation? Mark.
Thank you.
Okay, the next special presentation is the Economic Development Certified Community
Recertification Status as it's recognized by the Nebraska Department of Economic Development. And I believe we have Lindsay here from State Economic Development to tell us more about this.
Good evening.
Evening.
It's an honor to be with you here this evening to present the City of Norfolk, the certificate for the Economic Development Certified Community. My name is Lindsay Janis and I'm with the Nebraska Department of Economic Development. I live and work here in northeast Nebraska as a field service representative. And I want to tell you with real sincerity what a pleasure it is to work with your team. And when I say team, I do mean team. Your local economic development staff here at the city work closely with other city representatives, businesses, local and regional partners to promote growth in the community. The Economic Development Certified Community is sponsored by the Nebraska Department of Economic Development and the Nebraska Diplomats. And it's really an evaluation of a community's readiness for development and a recognition of the best practices that they're implementing in community and economic development. A lot of communities use it as a framework to try to figure out what does it mean to be in economic development and what do we do. And so it's a nice framework for that. We know that our Economic Development Certified Communities, and there are right around forty of them here in this state, they're the perfect place for businesses looking for a location or businesses that are in those communities to expand if they're looking at other locations that they could. One special thing about Norfolk is that you're doing all kinds of things to make it a great place to live for the people that are working at those businesses as well, with your expansion of housing and various amenities that you're working on. Norfolk was initially certified as an Economic Development Certified Community back in 2006. And so this will be the third time that the community has been recertified. So I guess I always say don't take that lightly. That takes some work and some consistency in your economic development practices and that's something to really be proud of. So kudos to the team that worked on this, everything from the application itself and then all the projects and initiatives that go into that application. The certification looks at strategic planning, your business retention and expansion visit program, sites and buildings that are available for development, housing and community development. And then it also looks at what is an ever-growing importance, your web presence and what other people are seeing when they look at Norfolk online. So on behalf of the Nebraska Department of Economic Development and the Nebraska Diplomats, I'm proud to present this certification for your recertification as an Economic Development Certified Community. And many, many congratulations. This is something really to be proud of and we're very proud of you.
Well.
So with that, I guess I'd like to present this certificate to the mayor. And I know it sounds like we've got some city representatives that also would be involved in that picture.
Very good.
Thank you so much, really appreciate all your work.
Mayor, imagine the caption out of that picture in forty years.
Okay, well, thanks again, Lindsay, for being here to present that. I will just make a few comments. So much about economic development is about partnership, also planning and being proactive and having state economic development be a partner in so much of what we do is invaluable. The city economic development team from Andy on down, working with local partners like NINED and others, it's teamwork, it's cooperation, again, it's planning, it's being proactive. And you see what's happening in Norfolk now and not, it's not by coincidence that a lot of these projects are hitting right now at the same time. They've taken years of planning and support in the background. And so we appreciate that recognition and appreciate the work of our economic development officials and local partners. With that, we will now move on to the regular agenda. And item number nineteen, I would look for a motion to consider ordinance number 5699, amending section 25-7 of the city code to reduce the number of members of the tree advisory board from nine to seven members, with five of the seven members being residents of the city, and no member of the city council shall be a member of the board.
Your Honor, I move consideration of ordinance number 5699.
Second. Okay, motion in second. And Danny, can you give some background on this ordinance, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is simply a little bit of a cleanup ordinance here in looking at our, you know, our participation in keeping people on boards. It just made sense here to reduce the number of people on this board. And we did look at other communities and what kind of participation they have and the numbers on their boards. And most communities have seven, so we just adjusted accordingly.
And I think in order to get to a majority of members being present at any given meeting, it was found that it would be easier to reduce the number.
Yes, that is true, Mayor.
Okay. And we do have a very active tree board and they do a lot to promote beautification in the city, so we want to maintain that work going forward. Any questions or comments from the council on this proposal? If no further discussion, short title, please.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, to amend section 25-7 of the official city code to reduce the number of members of the tree advisory board, to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, roll call, please.
Granquist.
Yes.
Langy.
Yes.
Weeblehouse.
Yes.
Muren.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Clausen.
Yes.
File.
Yes.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance 5699 carries on first reading.
Your Honor, I move that we suspend the rules and pass this ordinance on second and third reading.
Second. Motion in second to suspend the rules and approve on second and third readings, if no discussion, roll call, please.
Granquist.
Yes.
Langy.
Yes.
Weeblehouse.
Yes.
Muren.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Clausen.
Yes.
File.
Yes.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance 5699 carries on second and third.
Okay, item twenty. Would look for a motion to consider approval to accept the lowest responsible bid of $30237 that satisfied bid requirements from Staley Applicators Incorporated for a replacement solids applicator truck and spreader box for the water pollution control plant.
I'll make the motion, Your Honor. Second.
Motion in second. And for some background on this, Mr. Rob Huntley, please.
Robin Lee, Wastewater Plant Superintendent, Mayor Council. We sent out bid requests to both local and outstate vendors, advertised in the local newspaper two times. On October fifteenth, we received only one bid and it was under budget by $46,763. The truck uses a special driven spreader box that has been proven to work well with the spreading of bio solids. So I guess I would ask if anybody has any questions about the truck, how it functions, and what we use it for. I'm open for that.
Okay, thank you, Rob. Any questions? There's a piece of equipment that you had budgeted for and were planning for, I think, given the dollar amount, we just wanted to make sure it was addressed in regular agenda. So thank you for that background. Okay, if no questions or comments, council, roll call, please.
Granquist.
Yes.
Langy.
Yes.
Weeblehouse.
Yes.
Muren.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Clausen.
Yes.
File.
Yes.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Okay, moves us to item number twenty-one. I would entertain a motion to consider ordinance number 5695, amending section 2-5 of the city code to update building, electrical, mechanical, and plumbing permit and registration fees, to update fees for appeal of a decision of a code official to update municipal solid waste rates and transfer station operating fee, to update water, sewer, and wastewater treatment rates and fees, and to remove duplicate listing of police towing and storage fees. As a note, ordinance number 5695 passed on first reading only at the September 21st council meeting and was tabled at the October 5th council meeting. So would actually, in order to address this, first need a motion to pull off the table, to remove from the table.
Your Honor, I move that we remove this ordinance from the table.
Second. Motion in second, any discussion on that? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Granquist.
Yes.
Langy.
Yes.
Weeblehouse.
Yes.
Muren.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Clausen.
Yes.
File.
Yes.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Okay, now I would entertain a motion to consider ordinance number 5695.
Your Honor, I move we consider ordinance number 5695 on second reading.
Second. Okay, motion and second. And Danny, once again, our city attorney, could you refresh our memory on this and give us a little background, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I misspoke earlier, I apologize. I referred to the earlier ordinance as a cleanup. That is not a cleanup. This here is essentially what we would refer to as a cleanup. This involves our fee, our fee schedule here. And these are various fees largely from the planning and zoning and the public works divisions of our city. So I am going to defer to Stephen Ramis as well as Val Grimes to handle questions and give background on those two areas.
Okay, thank you, Danny. Since we have had discussion on this prior, let's move right into that. So any comments or questions, council?
I'd like to have a couple of little discussion tonight about this ordinance. First off, there's, I have two issues with this. When we talk about the fees for appeal, there's one fee in particular, that's a $500 fee that you, you know, that you would appeal if you have an issue with, say somebody condemned your property, or if you were having an inspection on one of your projects that you pulled permit for and you disagree with a judgment call or a statement stating that you're not getting compliance with code, you can appeal this hundred dollar fee. After much discussion Thursday night, hearing from staff and hearing from election officials, the $500 fee that's in place has been there for almost ten to fifteen years. Now, they could quite pinpoint it was fifteen years or not, but so my particular, with that being stated, I don't think there's probably much opportunity for any movement to lower that fee. I just don't feel that that's going to happen tonight or in the future. Just with city staff is felt really, they were very vocal about that being the right amount. So with that being said, what I have an issue with basically would be, I feel that fee, when we put that appeal together, I almost feel like there's two different angles of this, two different applications for this. One would be if I have a disagreement with a, say my property is a disarray, unkept, I haven't, you know, done my duty as a owner of that property, and the property's falling down and needs to be condemned, and the property's condemned, and I want to appeal, and that would be a $500 fee if I, you know, obviously if I'm in the right, I get the money, I get the $500 back. However, I feel like that is separate. And when we talked about this part of the ordinance, that was the main reason why this fee was put in place, was because of those sort of issues when a property was condemned. And then people would just keep appealing and appealing and appealing even though the property was, you know, in such bad shape and needed to either be tore down or addressed. So I feel like that's a separate. Now, the other part of it, I, when I say that, I think that there's another portion of this, which was the appeal when I, when someone would pull a building permit and have an inspection on that particular project. I feel like that should be separated. And why I state that is even though we would not be changing the fee, I feel like in the future, when there is discussion about these fees, when we change those fees, I feel like there probably will be, you can look at, I feel like you look at these two separate ways. One is trying to deter people from taking advantage of our system. And the other, I feel like can deter a contractor slash homeowner from appealing a situation that they don't agree with, simply because they can't afford the, they can't afford the $500, and so it deters them from even bringing it up. Which with discussion with our building department, that rarely happens. So I'm not saying that this needs to be changed or go away or lowered or anything. All I'm saying is I feel like it needs to be split into two different things. So when they have, when future council has discussion about this, it's not just we're painting everything with one broad brush. We've got, we're looking at this from two different situations. So that would be my recommendation for that. And obviously, this has already passed on first reading, so that doesn't have to happen. But that would have to make, that would mean I would have to make a motion for that to change. And I don't know if that's going to, how that would work. You know, obviously, our fees are in place because they're in place, so I don't know if that's even an opportunity tonight, or if that's something that would have to happen prior to these fees being passed next time. Okay, so that would be my first discussion about this. The next one would be with the, I don't know if I need it separate, because I've got two issues. So I'm just asking just what I.
Do you want me to address that question first?
Yeah, thank you.
So I think it would make the most sense to not amend it as a function of this ordinance, but if that was something you had wanted to move to amend certainly, or to remove certain language from this ordinance, do that and then come back later and amend the other parts of code that actually deal with what we're, because that's going to require a little bit of a different rewrite, because we're breaking down two separate functions. So I don't, I do not think that we would be able to do that right now. I think you could probably remove the $500 appeal from certain sections where it's listed if that's, if that's how you wanted to do it.
I'm not saying remove it, I'm just saying it's a different fee. Like, there would be, we would have discussion, we would talk about fees on building permits and inspections.
Okay.
Fees on, say, a property that's condemned. I know that, just because.
Okay.
To me, it's two different, it feels that when you discuss it, it seems like two different areas.
Okay.
And, you know, that's how I would like to approach it. I'm not saying the fee needs to go away, it's like, we had very good discussion the other night and the majority of the people at that discussion felt that that fee needed to stay in place. So I'm not saying take it away, I just feel like it needs to be, when we analyze in the future, we have an opportunity to discuss both sections of that particular fee that I feel like is there. So that's.
How about this? How about I speak with Val really quickly and you move on to the second area that you have concern with, if that works for you, councilman?
Okay, then the second area I have, and I don't know how this would work, but I feel like with the sewer, and again, there was a lot of discussion about this, and there's already been, this is going on almost two subcommittees now, where we talk about fees as they relate to sewer and water assessments on your property when you have sewer running, sewer and water running from your property. Traditionally, it's been a $50, no, a $5 lineal foot cost, that's what it has been. Tonight, in this, what we would propose would be that would be a $50 lineal foot cost. That's the issue I have. I can go into a lot of different discussion about it and reasons why I feel that way. I don't know how deep we want to get into that discussion, so I was asking if it'd be possible, so we can get these fees approved, to then bring that, leave that out of the fees discussion that we're approving tonight and put that into another, on its own, because I feel like it, because of the, because of the amount that that could be to a particular property, I feel like it needs to be addressed separately. And that way, that allow, I feel if we can address it separately, then we can have more discussion, instead of going through, quite a bit of discussion tonight on that item. I don't know how bad that hurts. I know Steve, you've got some things you need to get worked out, but I just, just, you know, I think we could sit ourselves in some situations where we could have some extraordinarily high hookup costs on a property. And then, you know, without having a lateral movement to make it, so I guess I'll just throw some numbers out there to see what, so you know what I'm talking about. The average lot in Norfolk is probably around ninety to one-hundred-and-ten foot wide. So if we're talking at an average cost in Norfolk of being fifty-dollar running foot for sewer and water assessed to your property, if, say, you've got a hundred foot of frontage, obviously that's going to be around ten grand to hook up to that. Or you're going to be, that's going to be in the price of your lot already, right? So when you bought your lot, that was there. You built your home and bought a lot, either way, you've already paid for that. So this actual hookup fee would then be to somebody who lives, say, outside of town or something, or outside of town, but within an area where there wasn't sewer and water, and now he runs sewer and water around their house, and now they have to hook up because they're going to be required to have to hook up. They can't stay on their septic and well forever. As soon as those, as soon as their septic fails or their well fails, they'll be required to hook up to that because it's within so many foot of their home. And typically, if you sell your house, if the bank or if something, they know, and you've got a lien on that property, and they know you're that close to water and sewer, they're going to ask you to hook up. The new buyer will. That's just the way it is. They're going to try to get you off your septic and on that well. So with that being said, what I fear can happen is when you have a RR development, which are typically no less than three acres, because that's what you have to be to have a well and septic. And we have those both in every direction that you look at our community. We have it south of town, north of town, west of town, we have those type of developments. You could get into a situation where you've got over a hundred foot of, or you could have over five hundred foot of frontage, maybe six hundred foot of frontage. That's not very much for a five to six acre lot. That's about what typically would be. And so you could be looking into a, say you had five hundred foot of frontage, you could be talking fifty grand for your, to hook up to that. Plus, you've got to run new water and sewer lines because your septic's in your well are traditionally way apart from each other, and they're usually behind your house. So if the sewer and water's in front of your house, now you're talking another three hundred foot, and that's going to run you around sixty dollars lineal foot to run both sewer and water up. So you've got that cost. So you could be sitting there, say, the situation that would come to mind for me is if I, my house appraises, say, at $300,000, I go to sell it, and I'm then notified that I need to hook up, for the buyer to buy my house, I've got abandoned my septic and my water line and hook up the city sewer that I'm going to hit with a $50,000 cost. Then I'm going to have another $25,000 to $30,000 cost to run sewer and water to it. And then my, I'm going to baby possibly, because of where I'm sitting, possibly have to put a lift station in my house. I'm going to be tearing up, if I can't bore a directional bore it, I'm going through my lawn, I'm running, brewing speaker lines. So this can become up to, essentially get to around a $75,000 cost. And I don't know any assessor that's going to assess that property and say that your house is worth that much more because you've got city water and sewer running in front of it. So those are the things that made me nervous. Now, in our discussion, we had some really good discussion about, well, you can't just force that onto the ratepayers, the taxpayers of the community. And I get that. So it was thrown out there for a possible cap, a cap on that not to exceed. And it was thrown out there for a possible, if that, say, a RR lot or a 10 acre lot gets sold and is subdivided, that that city sewer and water then would be recouped at that time, because you know how a developer going in there and doing some development. And so we had a lot of different angles we were discussing, and we never really got to a point where there was any, well, it's brought to, it was basically kicked, so we brought it here tonight for all you. So that's where I'm at the point now where I feel like because of the amount of money we're talking about, and it's not going to happen all the time, this is going to be you. And full times, you're going to see something like this, you know, when we're talking about, and obviously, it's going to get more and more as we continue to move west with our housing developments and northwest in particular. So I guess with that said, I would be asking then, like I stated earlier, have this particular fee taken off of this tonight and brought back in front of subcommittee to have discussion just on that fee alone, so we can come, and I could be totally wrong, obviously this passed on first reading, correct, I mean? So we're already in the woods. I'm just bringing this up now because I missed that subcommittee. And I, so anyway, that's where I'm at, and I don't know how that works also, so.
So what we can amend as a function of this ordinance is just simply the fee, like you said, putting, having a change to the code that would deal with future subdividing of the properties and then the assessments at that point, that would be a more elaborate revision to the code, not just the fee schedule. So I think in that regard, if we want to, if we want to amend specific line items in here, I think, I think you could do that, or, you know, however you want to do that. But I think, councilman, what we're talking about as far as the subdivision factor, I think that's something that we'd have to look at the code. And that's going to be the same with the first area of concern as far as the appeal fee. And that's going to be the same with the first area of concern as far as the appeal fee. Um, we would just have to amend the larger code. It wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to do that as a function of this. So if you wanted to remove certain five hundred dollar fees that were added as a function of this ordinance, you could move to amend it with, and do that, and then, you know, you can vote on it, we could do, we could do that. But it all, the section of code that it refers to, there's just, there's one section, and it doesn't have the breakdown that your feedback would anticipate. So that would require a larger code revision.
Yeah, the only thing that worries me, if we pass the fee schedule as read, as long, that, that is in place, that is what's out there, and then we would have to then go into, we'd have to make the amendment after the fact. And um, in order to do that, and there's no saying that that would happen, you know, obviously. And so that's where it becomes a situation where uh, I feel like that the fifty dollar linear foot cost, while it is a fair, average breakdown of what city and sewer, or what sewer and water costs in a, you know, a linear foot, I don't know if the level of burden that could be placed on a certain, an individual homeowner is quite fair.
So if I can, let's um, help navigate the discussion here, because there's two, two issues you brought up. Um, first on the appeal fees, and just to be clear, um, when Danny referenced this, part of this was housekeeping and updating. There's, there were no uh proposed changes in fees, there were no increases in fees. This was, this was a updating in regards to appeals, right? So.
Yes.
So, okay, so, but I think, councilman, your point was, you feel like um, the uh appeals could be separated in code because they don't necessarily belong together, or be, or, or they shouldn't be categorized in the same space. So you would like to potentially look at that down the road. Reserve the right to discuss that separation in code sometime in the future. Secondly, um, the sewer fee, uh sewer extension fees, I think that's, that's the discussion item we need to make a decision on tonight, whether, you know, whatever we're going to do. So we did have an extensive subcommittee, subcommittee discussion last week where a number of members of the council um were able to talk through this, talk about the background of why uh we were updating this fee. Um, and I, if you, if you're okay, I think we focus on that now because it sounds like you're okay with moving on from the first point and having that remain in this ordinance, and then potentially looking later down the road as to separating. Um, so the updating of the sewer extension fees, I think, and we'll have Steve Ramus add some background here. Uh, I think we looked at peer communities as to where they're at, and the suggested um change here was in line with some of those peer communities. Steve, can you talk a little bit about that proposal, please?
Yes, yes, Mayor, Council. Um, we did look at, at our sister communities, or peer communities, probably be a better term. Specifically, we looked at Columbus, Carney, Hastings, and North Platte. And uh, at a subcommittee meeting, uh, a couple of months ago, we were, those were brought to the table and discussed. Um, for example, North Platte is using the average of the most recent ten districts. Hastings has a, a fixed number. Uh, City of Carney uses the cost of an eight inch main or eight inch sewer main. Um, and then Columbus, again, is using a fixed cost. So between those three, uh, the subcommittee deliberated uh what was, might be appropriate for Norfolk. And settled on a, a running average of the five most recent assessments. Currently, um, council is, it would not be a fixed fee at fifty dollars. Again, it would be a running average, um, which currently would be about forty-six dollars for water and about fifty-four dollars for sewer, again, based on that running average.
And just, just to clarify, Steve, the fixed costs in the peer communities that have fixed costs, where are they at right now?
Those fixed costs, let me bring that back up. And I did not do, I just, I just state that I, I didn't do any research into how old these fees are, which is kind of similar to our, our case here, where our fees multiple decades old. Um, Columbus is running twenty-five dollars a foot for sewer, thirty-eight dollars a foot for water. Hastings is running thirty-three dollars a foot for sewer and twenty-eight dollars a foot for water. So even amongst the cities, those, you know, those numbers are, are flipped in terms of which one's higher, which one's lower. Um, it just depends a little bit on your standards and, and how you're, how you're installing them, whether you're PVC, ductile iron, clay, uh, those make a difference as well.
One of those communities had an average of the last ten assessments, is that correct?
North Platte was using an average of the last ten, yeah. The other thing I, I would point out is, is the, these are generally quite rare. Um, in, in, in terms of the fairness conversation, generally, everybody else in that district um has already paid that. So if they're already hooked up to water and sewer, and, and they had an assessment district come through, they paid that real assessment cost for that linear footage in front of their property. So I, I think it's a matter of fairness back to those landowners in terms of those that were missed as a function of that district and what, what those individuals are paying then to connect.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Any other questions or comments from the council on this discussion?
Hey, um, you know, this is an ordinance, I know we voted to pass it the first time around. We're trying to fit a lot into this one ordinance to amend our code. You know, I just, we, you obviously found the difference, you know, the property maintenance code, it's always been that way. But then we have the building code, which it seemed like that might have just been added, and maybe I misunderstood, and Councilman Clausen was speaking. And then we've got water assessment, sewer assessment fees. Sometimes I wonder, you know, are we putting too much into this? Because we have some areas that we want to pull out. And you had a quote, was it ten years ago, somebody said, one of the national level, you know, you have to pass it to know what's in it. I, I mean, I don't think we want to get into that point here. So I, I don't know, and I've read the subcommittee notes. I just don't want to pass something that then we have to come back, and, and, and I understand the time constraints. I know we more or less get seated anew again in December. So I, I, you know, are, are we doing the right thing? Because once the fees are in place, as Councilman Clausen says, they're in place. And then come back and try to pull this out, or try to just split this up tonight? I don't know if we're being fair to the ordinance, or even being fair to who it all affects. That's just my comments, thank you.
I'll uh, go ahead. I'll speak to that a little bit because I think uh, a five dollar assessment and the rest of the burden being put on all of the rest of the taxpayers, um, isn't right either. So I think Shane definitely has a point, and, and I have no problem with a possible cap and, and how all that might work, um, as maybe an addendum to this later on. Obviously, I think this is something that we pass because the average of five uh most recent districts is very similar to what the actual costs are. And uh, it, it definitely could end up being a burden on somebody with a three or five acre lot. I, I totally understand that, and that's where I, I say, I think there's, there's options of being open to a, to a cap in the future. But I also think that we, we couldn't leave something at five dollars, um, the way it is, and have this discussion and, and uh, have the rest of the taxpayers pay that, that burden, when they've already paid their own at, at full reasonable cost at the time that they either bought their land or built their house, or, or updated their septic and water. Well, they didn't even do that, they paid five, I guess, in some of these, but, oh, so. I'm leaning on the other side, I guess, and, and of, of that we pass this as it is. And I definitely think there's uh options for us to move as to amending this um in the very, very near future, whether that's in subcommittee, I suppose, is how it's all going to start. But um, we could definitely look at options for a, for a cap, or how this might turn about if somebody decides to uh subdivide their land, you know, in the near future. I also think that there's, you know, you look at some of those properties at the west and northwest, they're, they're obviously more, worth more than three hundred thousand. Their land alone is probably worth.
You know, you've got properties of south, south and east, that'll be the same.
Agreed, agreed, agreed. Definitely, we, I mean, we already, part of our, part of our discussion on Thursday was some of the land even to the east, so, that, that's where I'm sitting on.
I, I don't disagree with you, Corey, about the cost, you know, that other people have paid it, and we've got pretty low. I just want to make sure that we pass an ordinance that we don't have to come back and do two or three things to. That, that's what I'm looking at, you know, let's, if we're going to pass it, let's pass it so it's in a good form and, and, yeah, we may have people disagree with it, but let's make sure we've hammered it all out. But that's, that's my thought, maybe you have, subcommittee, I don't know.
And, and that's, in a way, that's what we're doing. We're just updating what our, what our typical fees are in a way, and some went up in minor increments. Um, but this one, uh, how this stayed at five dollars for thirty years, or who know? We don't even know, all we know is possibly early eighties, and it's never been changed. And that's, that's, that's one, so that's how we kind of came up in the notes, you probably read that, that's how we kind of came up with an option of um, an average of five, so we never have something like this happen where we forget to update to try and uh keep current, I guess. And so having a huge jump like this, astronomical and obviously brings out large discussion because it is a, it could be a very huge issue for somebody that has three to five acre lots, no doubt, no doubt.
Wait, uh, five dollar fee, I think, was in place and never became an issue just simply because we didn't have the situation to run into today. And, and we've gotten to a lot, we've gotten a lot, well, our staff has gotten more creative with how they assess fees for sewer and water, especially sewer, like you saw going up Eisenhower. So in the past, traditionally, everything was assessed, but we weren't necessarily always running underneath rivers, you know, down properties in front of undeveloped properties or sold. Now that we're moving forward, our city's changing and growing, we're going to see this. And so I think that five dollar fee became more highlighted and needed to change just particularly because of where we're at today and how we're doing things. And that's, I think that's why we never ever, that's only the reason I could see why it was never ever issued before.
I can see it, yeah.
Okay, um, I guess I would like to say that I, I have to agree with uh Councilman Grandquist that, that this has passed on first reading. I believe strongly that we should pass it again this evening. I mean, these are, these are evolving documents all the time. So, so the idea that, that uh, a future council or council, you know, within six or nine months from now might make an amendment from this, that's not a bad thing. Um, again, it's, it's a evolving process, and the other thing, you know, I think we need to weigh it on out, is it a cap? Or is it some other type of consideration of how it's being looked at? Since, as you mentioned, Councilman Clausen, there, you know, possibility of a handful of situations that, that may develop within the, within the next reasonable timeframe of, say, three to four years. Um, if, if it becomes a problem, or if, if developers see it as something that needs to change, then, then that's when the council needs to react to it at that. I, I would hate to cherry pick basically two items out of here and hold, and, or one item out of here, really, and hold this, this ordinance up due to that because it, there's, there's uh seventy different, I think there were seventy, I was counting them and counting the yellow line changes where they were there. And, and to, to cherry pick that out and to hold the ordinance up for that, I, I, I think is negligent on our part of governing a, as a whole that way. So I, you know, I, should it grow or should it change? Very possibly, it very well may, but uh, should this pass this evening? Yes, I believe that it should, as, as it's written.
Any other comments or discussion, Councilman? And I, I would say, you know, there's a typically quite a bit of background discussion on ordinances like this prior to them getting to the council agenda. So um, to this point, there have been two subcommittee discussions on this particular ordinance. A good portion of it was simply updating um some language and not changing fees. The one that seemed to be most outdated and out of line with real life costs today was the sewer extension, which warranted discussion. And I think we had, through that subcommittee process, a pretty um extensive analysis of what our peer communities are doing and where we fell in line. And I think the outcome of the proposal was not out of line with what um our other commu-, other peer communities are doing today. So I don't think it's an unfair outcome. That said, as Councilman Langley stated, these are um evolving processes with the door open to future discussion, if it's justified, um, moving forward. And so I think that's a reasonable uh perspective here to consider what's before us tonight and then leave the door open to reasonable discussion if should it be needed um at some point in the future, so.
Would it be appropriate to vote for amendment two? And if that does not pass, what would be, you know, I'm just asking.
Yeah, you have the prerogative of offering any amendment during the, this process. There's nothing procedurally that's barring you from.
But that's correct, and we're actually, in addition to whatever amendment you may be anticipating, we're going to need, um, just to pass this ordinance, we're going to need an amendment that would amend the operative date to December first. As it stands now, because it was passed in December, the operative date is October first. Obviously, that's came and gone. Um, and just because we have this meeting and another in November, at which we could pa- pass it on third reading, December first seems to be reasonable. So that would probably be separate from, you know, from yours, councilman. But yes, you, you could offer an amendment to vote on, and if it was something substantive, which I'm guessing it would, um, then that would be something that I would take back and present again on third reading. If that were to pass. But first, we, first you have to offer the amendment, then everybody would vote on it. Then if it passed, um, you know, you'd vote on the amendment, then, you know, vote on passing the ordinance, and we'd have to have another amendment with the date. And then if it does pass on second reading, it would only be able to pass on second with that substantive change because I would take it back and obviously, we would amend it because that's, that's a big amendment on second, and then we would present it at the next meeting for third reading.
So Danny, if I'm hearing you correctly, there, you would actually, if, if Councilman Clausen decided to go for an amendment, that would be one amendment that would require it to go back then? Or the amendment for the op-, or, or the operative date of moving it to December one, would that also require it to go back?
No, sir, that's not, uh, that's not substantive. So that, if, if there was no other amendments made and we just had that one, we could approve this ordinance as it stands with that amendment of the date on second and third. But if there is an amendment that's approved tonight regarding what Councilman Clausen has been referring to, those two concern items, that would be considered a substantive change that deviates from what was passed on first reading. And so under the, the language of our code, I would have to take it back and amend it. It'd have to go on file in the clerk's office for one week as it stand, would stand amended, and then we could bring it back to the next meeting to be passed on third.
Thank you for the clarification.
You're welcome.
Partly because I'm asking this because I do agree, Jim, there's certainly some items on this deal, uh, there's fees that need to get, so you guys keep the books right and get, you know, know where things are at. Uh, the issue I have is even, we did have looked at the average that these other communities are doing, and we have used the average that it's costing us. And I know that that is why, where this number came from. I'm not saying I disagree with the number, I disagree that we haven't had a discussion about what sort of lateral movement we give our city officials. So when you do run the situation, and you will with this, and what those lateral movements are, and we don't know what other. So when you do run the situation, and you will with this, and what those lateral movements are, and we don't know what other communities use for lateral movements. When I say lateral movement, I'm talking about if Steve has to go to somebody and say, you've got a thousand foot advantage. We're talking about a thousand foot for you to hook up or a hundred thousand for you to hook up. And he has no movement, if there's no, nothing in place within our code that says, we will cap. We will look at this, if, if it is sold in a subdivision later on, we will waive it at this point until it's sold, sold, and then the zoning change. We haven't talked about any of those things that could possibly, and that's kinda what I'm coming from, I'm saying that the fee's falling. I'm just saying that there's no movement in order to deviate if the situation arises that would put us in a really weird, bad, bad situation. And that's what I'd like to see, I'd like to see that discussion we make and have that discussion so that we can then have something in the books that states, okay, we go over five hundred foot, we're gonna cap it, you know, if we get over, if we're selling just to RR and it's a ten acre lot, you know, and then you subdivide this into ten, or one acre lots, now we have to, so both of the discussions I'd like to have with this, instead of passing this to five hundred, or fifty dollar, a linear foot rate, that's where my, that's where my hangup is. And that's where I feel like in order to do that, I have to make a motion to amend. But then I don't want to hold up the, the process moving forward for your additional fees to get on the books moving forward. So, that's, that's where we're at.
Can I, can I assist you just in clarification?
Yeah.
So, would your amendment be looking for to the bottom of page twenty-two underwater to remove the language that would amend it to say, average of five most recent districts, so that it would stay at five dollars? And then down on page twenty-five, at the top of page twenty-five, we're, under sewers, where it says, average of five most recent districts, would you be looking for an amendment to remove that language and keep it at five dollars? Is, are those, is that the amendment that you would be looking to, to make and then move the rest of it forward?
This is the art of politics, but Councilman.
Would, would he, would he be able to have an amendment that just, I guess you can't remove that, we gotta have something in there, right?
We would, we would need to have something in its place, yes.
See what he's trying to do.
Yeah, that's the problem. Can you pass it the way it is and then were to amend it after the fact? There's no guarantee that'll ever happen. Well, that's where. Because Adam, as you are amended, so you're better off just voting now, you know, because there's really nothing I can do to change this. Or even make an amendment, that's gonna change the basic way, that's gonna do anything, you know, the only thing I can ask for is to leave it where it is. And that's really not what we're here to do. So you see, I'm kinda in a corner, I'm a pickle, that's why you're passing the law. There's nowhere for me to go with this except for basically to take, remove the idea of having an amendment and just voting on it. And if it passes, so be it, and it's out there, I guess.
Well, that's, we have to leave a fee.
That's, that's why I, I think you still need to always keep un- under consideration is that this is a fluid document. And you have at least two more years to approach, to, you know, two more years and, and one day to, to get this thing, if, if you so desire to work it on around to, to adjust it as to how you, you, you feel it should, should be, if you can get the support of, of the future council, you know. I, that's why I, I struggle with not passing this as, as it is right now. So, short of the amendment to change the operative date.
And, right, it, I, it is important to remember, as the Councilman said, that any council member can bring forward any kind of amendment pretty much at any time. To, you know, so this is not, should it pass tonight, again, reminder, it's already passed one reading. Should it pass second and third tonight is not to say that it's untouchable from further consideration, even two weeks from now, or whatever the case might be in the future, so.
That, that's where I was gonna go with it. Josh, Josh beat me to that. But I think that's obviously what we're elected here to do, and that's what we're gonna have as a discussion is, I think the people of the city want us to bring up topics like this. So if it is, if it is passed, it's, it's our right, it's our, it's our duty to make sure that we bring these up and, and address them. You know, even if it's right after, right after this vote, if it so passes. But I'd be right there with you Shane, I'd be in that meeting, if I happen to be on that subcommittee. Depending on, obviously, we have new subcommittee, we'll have a new president and new subcommittee attendees for different ones. But if I, if I happen to be in that, I'm all open for that discussion. I'd be right there with you to make sure it starts right away.
Danny, just to clarify, you did an amendment to remove that of the five average. You can't change the code because the code right now says five dollars a foot, correct?
That's correct.
Where if we pass it, we can readdress it down the road, if he doesn't have the votes for the amendment.
Well, I, I don't, I don't know that he's officially offered.
It's gotta go back to the five dollars. It, it's gotta go back to the five bucks. Okay. And then we'd have to address it later. Either way.
But ju- just to clarify, sorry, I, I think I was confused by your question. He can offer, I, I mean, if he wanted to offer a different fee in that place.
He can offer.
I just, I didn't hear, I didn't hear, I didn't hear a fee. If you had a, if you had a different fee that you wanted to offer, yeah, you, you could offer that and then as an amendment, and the council could vote on that. It's, it's not one or the other. I, I just, I was trying to clarify what you were saying there, Councilman. But if you wanted to offer, if, if there's another fee that you wanted to offer in its place, then they could vote on that as well.
I do, I would, I would, but it's, again, it's, you're talking about, like, my personal feeling would be a cap rate of twenty-five thousand not to exceed. Just because I feel like that is a reasonable hookup fee, but I'm not, again, this, the, the subcommittee worked to get this fee to an average of what they were looking at. And there was a lot of discussion on that. So in doing that, they're kinda throwing the subcommittee under the bus, essentially, by trying to make an amendment to that fee now, does that make sense? So I feel like this just needs to go to a vote. We need to say, yes, I'm in favor of it, or no, I'm not, and move on. Because the more discussion they did, we're not really doing anything right now. And I can say whatever, but now you're talking about me coming up with a, a fee with no discussion that you're voting on. And obviously, we've had two subcommittee meetings about the fee that's in place now. And so I don't feel it's fair for me to put a fee number out there. It really isn't. It undermines everybody sitting here. So with that being said, I feel like this just needs to go to vote year to date, and we move on. And if, if so be it, like Jim said, if it does pass, then we can maybe look into it again. I don't ever, I, there's not many situations that I know that we go back and address things again. But we might with this situation, simply because it will come up. Somebody will be getting hit with this and will have a situation and we'll be discussing it. And it just will happen. So, that's, that's pretty much the end of it. I would like to move on with our meeting and not take anybody anymore, anybody else's time or more time than I need to. And I, again, thanks for the two meetings, especially the last subcommittee meeting, for putting up with me and everything I have to say about it. But let's move on and get this vote out there.
That's all part of the job, Councilman, so that's how you work out the, the process. To that end, it sounds like we do need to entertain a motion that would alter the operative date of the.
Yes.
Ordinance. And again, Danny, that is to what date? December?
December first.
December first, okay. So do I hear a motion in that regard?
Your Honor, I would move that we amend the operative date as presented in this ordinance to December first, 2020. In lieu of that, that is presented.
Second.
Okay, motion in second on the amendment to alter the operative date to December first. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call please.
Granquist?
Yes.
Langie?
Yes.
Weeblehouse?
Yes.
Muren?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Clausen?
Yes.
File?
Yes.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Okay, that takes us back to discussion of the amended ordinance. Any further discussion, comments, or questions, Council? I don't see why not. Okay. If none, short title, please.
An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, to amend section two dash five of the official city code to update building, electrical, mechanical, and plumbing permit and registration fees, to update fees for appeal of a decision of a code official, to update municipal solid waste rates and transfer station operating fee, to update water, sewer, and wastewater treatment rates and fees, to remove duplicate listing of police towing and storage fees, providing this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, with that, roll call, please.
Granquist?
Yes.
Langie?
Yes.
Weeblehouse?
Yes.
Muren?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Clausen?
Nope.
File?
Yes.
Voting in the affirmative. Granquist, Langie, Weeblehouse, Muren, Jackson, File. Voting in opposition, Clausen. Ordinance fifty-six ninety-five carries on second reading.
Danny, I have a question for you then regarding if we, if I would so move to suspend the rules and pass on third reading, the number of votes required for it to pass.
That would be a super majority, so that's gonna be six.
Be six?
Yes.
Okay. And if it did not pass, it would, if it did not pass on third reading, it would fail?
If it, if it doesn't pass on third, if it doesn't pass on third reading.
It doesn't pass on third reading with the super, because if it's just third reading and not a, not a suspension of the rules, you don't need a super, you just need.
That's correct, you won't, no.
So, okay. That being said, I'll leave it at that, because the operative date is still December first, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on then to item number twenty-two. Would entertain a motion to consider resolution number twenty-twenty dash fifty-six adding stop signs to control traffic in all four directions at the intersection of Fourth and Brash Avenue.
Your Honor, I'd be for consideration of resolution number twenty-twenty dash fifty-six.
Second that, Your Honor?
Motion in second. And to hear some background on this proposal, Chief Don Miller of the Norfolk Police Division.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a motion that's coming forward as part of the Brash Avenue reconstruction project. Anytime stop signs are utilized, the code indicates that the police chief puts out suggested stop signs and then the council affirms it. As part of the re- the Brash Avenue reconstruction, it was recommended that the intersection of Fourth and Brash be controlled with stop signs. So that's the reason this is coming forward, to get those stop signs installed so that they're enforceable. And if you have any additional questions, I can answer them and/or Engineer Steve Ramus, who was involved with the Brash Avenue reconstruction, either one of us can try to answer your questions.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
Chief, I don't know if it's you or Steve, would have to answer it. Somebody gonna, once this is all open, somebody gonna monitor that during the quote-unquote heavy traffic times, being, I guess, before school starts, when school gets out, a lot, a lot of flow. Because sometimes with four-way stops, you know, it's an education process.
Sure. I, wi- with a major intersection like this, we will definitely be monitoring the traffic flows from a law enforcement's perspective. I don't know, Steve, I, if they're gonna be doing it from an engineering standpoint, I would suspect that they would, but that, I'm not gonna speak to that necessarily. But yes, we would be monitoring that to see how it worked. Obviously, it's a whole new roadway and new design, and so we're gonna wanna identify educating the public, enforcement issues, problem areas, and with this major of a reconstruction, there's gonna be a learning curve for everybody.
It, this is probably for Steve, when, when that was designed or constructed, there's, there's actually conduit and stuff installed right now.
Yeah, it's not, it's not uncommon for us in, in reconstruction projects to accommodate either current or future signal installation. And so this intersection, like, like other intersections, does have conduit installed. We really don't do conduit too much anymore. We're, we're moving to radar and other, other means of, of control. But we di- we did put it in this intersection just to have it as an option in the future.
Case this doesn't work out.
Yeah, I hate to say that, but, I mean, it's working right now, it's not even open, so, I mean, I.
That makes it work perfect, it's not open, but, okay.
Steve, can you add to that the warrant process? So, intersection, intersection like this, what the traffic count doesn't warrant signalized intersection, correct? So, e- even if we wanted to put that back in, you would have to go through a process to, to go outside of that, right?
We would reevaluate the warrant process. It is an unwarranted signal. It's not the only one we have in, within the city. It was probably installed at some time for some reason, you know, it could be public safety or, or other. But we do monitor, you know, all of those intersections like that, that, that tend to be, you know, I don't wanna use heavy, it, it's, it's not the correct term. It's, it's, you know, it's in an important corridor and from two directions. And, and we certainly wanna monitor that and make sure it's appropriate from a long-term perspective.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion?
I don't, I don't know that I necessarily have a question for either one of these two gentlemen. And I hate to sit here and maybe sound like I disagree with, with police. But this intersection, whether it's warranted or not, seems to, at least to me and some of the public, that it should, should remain being stoplights. Now, in that same effect, I feel like, I guess Shane on this side of this topic here, where it's something where you don't wanna hold up because you wanna get Brash open and, and put up the stop signs and let's go and see how it works. But personally, from what I'm seeing, what I'm hearing is, stoplights is, is probably the right option there and not stop signs. So, prove me wrong, I guess, and, and I'm not gonna sit here and hold something up thinking that, you know, we should not pass this or table it or amend it for any reason other than stoplights. But I have a hard time, to be honest with you, of, of voting for this because of stop zones at this location where I think a stoplight is probably very warranted. Whether a study shows it or not, I think they're not the ones driving in between a middle school, high school, grade school during these terrible times of, of downtown traffic. And then also having people going to work at the same time. It's just, it's, it's not an enjoyable corridor. And then we're also looking at trying to grow downtown. We want more people to be downtown, more businesses downtown. And the more you have of that, and the more stoplights you need, or the more traffic you're gonna have. And, and it's, it's a lot easier for, especially when you have turning lanes, as this intersection has, but for a pedestrian to push a button and wait for a lighted white walking sign or a sound if they, if they're impaired and need that compared to trying to cross at a stop sign and not have those sounds or signals to, to cross safely. So, that's where I happen to stand. I just thought of, we're voicing the opinion on that.
Any other questions or comments?
I guess I have to disagree with Councilman Granquist to a certain extent that way. I, I would like to see while the stoplights or stop signs actually work there. I think what I'm hearing out in the community is more a fear of change more than, than rationalization of seeing how something works that way. And we're a society that hates change, in, in a large extent anyway, that way. You know, I, I remember when the first roundabout came into town, that this was the most horrible thing and no, no truck traffic will ever be able to, to handle this that way. And, and I believe they are fairly successful as long as you don't approach them with a negative attitude. And I think that same may be here. I am interested in seeing, along with engineering and, and law enforcement monitoring this and allowing them to come up with reports back as to, here's how it's working and here, you know, it, it may be that, okay, this was in, is something that we need to change or we need to go to a signal at some point in time, but I. to change, or we need to go to a signal at some point in time, but I, you know, I, I think the, uh, design team, uh, spent extended amount of time on this, and that design team, you know, that's what they do for a living. Uh, I always love, and, and I don't mean for it to be critical, but I love hearing from, you know, people that, okay, they, they don't do those things for a living, they don't have that background, but this is my gut feel of how it's gonna work, uh, at some point in time. I think we need to at least let the experts or let the designers, their input happen, and if it doesn't work, then we can change it. So, um, I, 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 I would really be interested to see in how, how the, these, um, stop signs work there that way, so I guess I, I'm in favor of it.
Yeah, I, I agree with that sentiment, to get this, um, long-awaited, uh, project opened, uh, to the public, and, yeah, it might, it's, all, all in all, it looks a lot different than it did before. Um, and as you said, Chief, there's some, um, education process to that, but I think it's vastly an improvement to what was there before. And, uh, all of these things that were talked about were, are reasonable, um, but to Councilman Langy's point, uh, the traffic experts obviously looked at this and, um, suggested that, uh, this measure would work, but we also planned for, if it didn't work, I mean, if, if there were continued problems going into the future with it, that we could, um, yeah, go back to a traffic signal, so I think that's the prudent path forward. And I think of it just anecdotally, too, um, intersections in town like Vic, Victory and East Benjamin, where there's a four-way stop, and it's a busy intersection, I, I think I have to pay attention a little bit more, uh, there, uh, to what, to my surroundings and what, and, and what's going on. And certainly with an intersection like, uh, Fourth and Brash, you want people to be paying attention, not speeding up to make a light here and there, um, but I think Councilman Granquist, to your point, pedestrian safety is very important, too, and I think we've put in, we've put some analysis into that, and that, um, that crossing will be well-marked and identified, um, for safe passage for pedestrians as well. So, that, that said, any other comments or questions?
Just one last one, and I think that's where, um, maybe some of that focus isn't on, um, when, when Brash opens up, everybody's gonna see how wide the sidewalks are, and they're meant for bicycle traffic, foot traffic, and, and a lot of it, and that's why we're doing it, is, um, roaming around downtown, and, uh, that's much different than, say, Eisenhower or Benjamin and, and Victory Road, um, any of those that might have a busy intersection of four-way stops, there's not that, um, pedestrian traffic like we're trying to get downtown. So, like I said, I'm gonna, uh, you know, I, I'm gonna pass, or I'm gonna, I, I'm fine with this as we go forward with stop signs, but I, I don't, I don't feel real comfortable with it, that it's not a traffic signal due to being able to, um, get people across those roads with a, with a signaled, um, intersection, or a sound to help impaired pedestrians, that you, you just don't have that with stop signs.
I kind of agree with what Corey's saying, also, because, I mean, you look at crosswalks anywhere else in town, and nobody stops and slows down and waits for pedestrian traffic. So you put that there, where there's going to be a lot of pedestrian traffic without a light, I just think that it will become an issue eventually.
I have a tendency to agree with Corey, also, we've got a, with the potential of downtown Norfolk, and have the proximity of that site to some, maybe some, future development and, uh, stuff going down in that area, I feel like the traffic lights would be warranted.
Any other discussion? The, so, eh, the reality of things is, um, that project is how close to opening back up, and there has to be some measure of traffic control when it does.
It'll be, you know, we'd like to keep it closed, and while we finish up some of the landscaping, uh, we still got striping to come in and get the stripe, final striping on there, um, so we're, you know, it'll be open before the Thanksgiving holiday, um, it could be open a few days earlier than that, just depends on how, how well progress goes, but, yeah, the reality is, we, you know, we need stop control in, in the intersection to open it, and so this is what allows us to install some sort of control at that intersection so that we can open it.
Okay, any other discussion? Thank you, Chief.
So I guess with, this again puts us back in a pickle, because we're in a situation where we need traffic control there, so obviously that would be, um, kinda go back to what we talked earlier, just have the right to look at that and address it in the future, and say, like Jim was stating, if the need's there, they go back to the traffic lights, but if we could get this good shot down tonight, then we're in, we're in trouble.
I, I agree, Shane, that's something that I think we, we as councilmen have to keep our eye on, and, uh, listen to the public and what they think on how this is going, along with, obviously, uh, police and city engineering and, and, uh, everybody involved, but it's something that we, we, we should keep a watchful eye on, and there's, there's really no reason we should hold up opening up a project for something like, like this when stop signs, that, it's gonna take longer than three weeks to get stoplights in there, especially with probably another contractor and another, um, contract, you know, things like that.
And I would note, too, that this project was not hatched up on a, on the back of a napkin overnight somewhere. There was a, a, a lot of, uh, public input going into the process.
Didn't make it seem very good.
All right, any further discussion?
What happened to the stoplights that were there?
If you have a question, you need to come forward to the podium.
What, uh, what happened to the stoplights-
Can you tell us your name and surname, please?
Sean, there you go. Uh, Sean Loney Meyer. Uh, what happened to the stoplights that were there?
Steve, can you just say?
So, as a function of the reconfigure, reconfiguration of Fourth Street and Brash and that intersection, um, those had to come down in order to reconfigure that intersection, they're salvaged to the city yards.
So it wouldn't take a whole lot to put those back up?
There's no footings in the ground or anything like that.
Okay, 'cause I guess, my question, I understand what you're saying, with the stoplights being safer, and the stop signs, however, easier and quicker, I've gone through that intersection four to five times a day for the last twenty-seven years, and there used to be stop signs there, and it was scary. With the stoplights there, you had to stop. A lot of times I was going through there, four in the morning, go to work, and there'd be people blow through the stop sign. So, my opinion, especially with the more foot traffic down there, I agree with the stoplights and not the stops. I can understand the stop signs temporarily until you can get the stoplights put back in, so, that's just my opinion or experience.
Sean, um, were they four-way stops? I've been here since ninety, I don't remember stop signs, there's always been light.
Uh, yeah, when I was nine, back when I first started there, there were stop signs there, and there was a four-way stop.
Four-way?
So.
All right, thank you.
Well, again, I think the infrastructure being in place for that to be a, a potential option, if it's, um, seemed to be needed, that that was accounted for, so, we have to make a decision tonight on what we're gonna do in order to open this roadway back up. And if there are no further questions or discussion, roll call, please.
Granquist?
Yes.
Langy?
Yes.
Weeblehouse?
Yes.
Muren?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Claussen?
Yes.
File?
Yes.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, resolution twenty-twenty dash fifty-six is adopted.
Okay, takes us to item number twenty-three, would look for a motion to consider approval of change order number one with Beckenhauer Construction Incorporated for River Point Square and Third Street Alley Project, resulting in a net decrease of five thousand nine hundred and twenty-four dollars.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Motion in second, and Steve, could you give us some background on this, please?
Mayor Council, this is change, change order one in front of you for the, um, Pocket Park down there at Third, Third and Norfolk Avenue, and then the alley, uh, half a block south between Third and Fourth. Um, this is a deduct change order. The, um, the larger deduct there is item nine, the irrigation system. After the project was bid, we continued to work with Beckenhauer on the irrigation item there, and there was a fairly substantial savings to the project, but, just, just about fourteen thousand dollars. Um, and that shows up in Schedule D. Under Schedule B, uh, once we got the parking lot pulled out of there, we found the foundations of the old structure that was, was there, uh, there was asbestos in the structure as well, mastic, uh, um, on there, so we had to deal, deal with that. The reason we had to get into the foundations a little bit was due to the conduits and so forth, there's quite a substantial amount of conduit running, running in there, uh, for electrical purposes, on lighting and stuff, and so, uh, we had to get in there and remove, um, remove portions of the wall, uh, to accommodate the underground portion of the project. Uh, we also made a change in one of the inlets there, uh, we get a lot of requests, uh, we're always looking for ways to lower the cost on projects, we get a lot of requests for nioplast inlets, uh, we thought we had an opportunity there to, uh, put a nioplast inlet in, kinda monitor that over time, see how that holds up, so you'll see there's about a thirty-three-hundred dollar cost savings there on the nioplast. Uh, finally up on Schedule A is a function of bidding that, uh, we had a lot of requests during the bidding phase to bid that as, as a single phase, and we allowed that, uh, however, and the contractors certainly realized they needed to accommodate a lot of the residents and so forth, and businesses that were along that alley, but, um, there were some fairly substantial gatherings in one of the businesses that took, took a little bit more, um, uh, work by the contractor. Ultimately, they did multi-phase that, pour in the alley, and so there's some additional costs there for that, that multi-phasing to accommodate the businesses.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Any questions on that?
Uh, Steve, or maybe Val can answer it, I mean, I know what used to be there, before the parking lot was poured, so when they demo a building like that, how deep do they have to go to take the footings out on demolition? Is there, do we have a code that requires that?
There's, I don't believe we have a code right now, Val. Um, you know, typically, we would require probably eighteen inches to three feet today, uh, if we were gonna be doing something like that, and, and we own the facility, um, just so you can get some stuff over it, specifically shower utilities, but I'm not aware, Jim, you aware of anything?
There, eh, you're, the question was, is there, no, there is-
There's no code.
There's no item in the code, and, I mean, that's really a, that's an owner's decision more than anything else, so.
Councilman Claussen, what's the contractor's code on how deep to remove that?
When you're digging up planes?
That was a basement. I think that was a ba, that was a basement, so I'm just saying, I know that's where we're running into that. It had a basement in that building.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Granquist?
Yes.
Langy?
Yes.
Weeblehouse?
Yes.
Muren?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Claussen?
Yes.
File?
Yes.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Okay, item twenty-four, would entertain a motion to consider resolution number twenty-twenty dash fifty-seven authorizing submittal of the blight and substandard determination study for the Riverside Boulevard redevelopment area to the Planning Commission for review and recommendation.
Your honor, I'll make a consideration of resolution number twenty-twenty dash fifty-seven.
Second that, your honor.
Okay, motion in second, and to kick off discussion on this, I think we hear from Ken, Andy Colvin, City Administrator.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Well, it is not Groundhog Day, um, so you are, you are, in fact, seeing this for the second time, uh, for the blights of standard study. Um, so this was originally submitted, uh, at the first meeting in October, um, but since, right after that happened, uh, we did have a request to include some additional parcels, uh, so they, they did meet the criteria, and the Economic Development District did look at that and include them in this study. We thought that it was appropriate to include them, uh, since we're already doing it, so it's a fairly simple change, but it did require a change, which means it has to come back again for you to accept this, and then send it on to the, to the Planning Commission for their review and recommendation. Again, this is for Riverside Boulevard, and it does include some parcels on the north side of Benjamin as well, and on the very south end, it does include the former post office building, to give you an idea for reference of where this is.
Okay, thank you, Andy. Any questions on that, that adjustment to the blight study in that area? I think it made, made sense to adjust it before we went through with the existing study, given the proximity to that area. Any other comments, questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Granquist?
Yes.
Langy?
Yes.
Weeblehouse?
Yes.
Muren?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Claussen?
Yes.
File?
Yes.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, resolution twenty-twenty dash fifty-seven is adopted.
Okay, item twenty-five, would look for a motion to consider ordinance number fifty-seven hundred, creating water extension district number one twenty-four, which generally provides for the extension of a water main south along US Highway eighty-one to Sherwood Road.
Your honor, I'd move for consideration of ordinance number fifty-seven hundred.
Second that, your honor.
Motion in second, and Steve, could you give some background on this?
Your honor, I will be abstaining from this as a personal issue with this ordinance.
Okay. Uh, Steve, could you give us some background on this, please?
Yes, Mayor Council. Before you, it was a water extension district that would extend water on Highway eighty-one, um, south from its terminus, which is currently about three hundred feet south of the river, on the, on the east side. This project would extend the water all the, down to Sherwood, it would also extend it across US Highway eighty-one at North Airport Road and down at Sherwood, uh, and provide water service to the airport. When the water goes north at North Air, or, I'm sorry, west at North Airport Road, there is a small extension that runs up the Frontage Road to provide service to those businesses on the west side of, of Highway eighty-one there. Uh, it does also extend east on, uh, Benita Drive, out to the Ewan Properties, um, and also to the county properties there. The project, there are thirty-two parcels on the project, uh, the project estimated at one million, one, one million two hundred and fifty thousand. Um, of that, about, uh, between the airport, which is the city's, and the city oversight cost, six hundred thousand dollars of that is estimated to be a city cost between, again, between the airport and our oversight costs. Um, currently, the, uh, at this stage, we, we have bonding costs, we have, uh, um, contingency costs built in there, so at this stage, we, we always try to have a number that's fairly high. Uh, we need to get through the bids before we really start to refine that number. Currently, the assessed, uh, the assessed cost per lineal foot, uh, is right about eighty-seven dollars and thirty-five cents. Um, I would certainly anticipate that to come down after we have bids, and we look at this as a project that we'd put on the street for bids, probably in January, um, and would expect construction here, spring and early summer, and would anticipate this being complete, uh, towards the end of summer, and, and available for those businesses to connect to. Uh, this came to our radar as a function of two or three businesses down there, that, uh, once we had the sewer project in place, started to contact us, they contacted us over a period of about two years. Um, as a function of that, we did go down and visit with all the businesses down there. Uh, like I say, there's thirty-two parcels down there, I would say, um, Dennis is here as well, and, and our staff engineer, John Cahill, they're the, they're the two that have had all the, the contact. Um, I would say, generally speaking, there's about half of those bus, half of those property owners that, uh, support the project. There's about a quarter of those businesses and property owners that, uh, are, are on the fence, uh, no opinion, and there's, there's probably about twenty-five percent of them that, uh, object to the project. Um, I, I've had three specific calls, uh, from, from those that object, uh, asking me to let you know that, you know, there is objection there.
Okay, thank you, Steve. I would note, for the record, too, um, we received, and I would note for the record, too, we received, council was provided a copy of it, we received an email from one business owner in the area in support of the project saying, one of the main reasons we need city water is our wells are going bad and we use a lot of water with cleaning and washing out screens for our business, it would, if we ever would lose water, it would hurt our business, so, for the record. Any questions, comments on this, Council?
Steve question, because over the past four to six years, this had been addressed as possibly providing for a rural water district down there, but what we're providing here now, and at that time, the rural water district water wasn't going to be capable of providing fire suppression. This that we are looking at doing here is capable of providing fire suppression for these facilities?
Correct. I don't know that that was the original intent of those two or three that contacted us, asking us to get water, you know, when would we get water headed down that way, but as we've had the conversations with some of the landowners, the fire suppression piece of it is probably almost more important to them than, in some cases, the domestic water usage.
I mean, you know, looking at it as a short term, yeah, there's a lot of smaller parcels in there, but at some point in time, it would not surprise me if those were acquired and something much larger moved on in there to where, you know, we would need a fire suppression.
And we have had contact by potential redevelopers down in there specifically looking for water as well.
Steve, a question, which side of the highway is this going on?
The main run for the water would be down the east side, sort of along the, between the, between the west side of the gravel frontage road on the east and the state highway.
You're connecting in, went out to Medelman's then, correct?
Yeah, Medelman's is already connected, yeah.
This is going to connect with that.
This will connect there, yeah, right there at the, was it FedEx building, not FedEx, UPS building.
Okay, thank you.
Steve, maybe you could touch on one topic that came up, I believe, on subcommittee meeting, of where this would go and whether it would affect the frontage road or not, how that would be handled.
The main alignment is to the west of the frontage road, so, I mean, there's, there might be a little bit of invasiveness into the frontage road, but most of the work's going to be in the ditch or the shoulder.
Any other questions?
I don't see any impact, Dennis and John, I don't see any impact to businesses during construction along there, they'll all have access via that, via that frontage road.
Any other questions or comments, Council? Hearing none, short title, please.
An ordinance creating water extension district number 124 in the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, establishing the outer boundaries of the district, designating the size, location, and terminal points, referring to the plan's specifications and engineer's estimate in connection therewith, to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, roll call.
Granquist?
Yes.
Langy?
Yes.
Weeblehouse?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Clausen?
Yes.
File?
Yes.
Voting in the affirmative, Granquist, Langy, Weeblehouse, Jackson, Clausen, File, abstaining from the vote, Muren, ordinance 5700 carries on first reading.
Okay, with that, we move to item 26, an administrative report from our Street Division, the 2020 Snow and Ice Plan.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here to present, my name is Mark Miller, Street Superintendent, I'm here to present the 2020 Snow Ice and Plan, Snow and Ice Plan. I don't have a presentation this evening on PowerPoint, so the packet is, it's in your packet, so if we could just go through this, I want to highlight some things, and then if you have any questions, feel free to ask them either at the time or when I'm finished. Page one, the scope and general instructions, we had one change there, we changed it to the, it used to state that we had approximately 150 miles of streets, but it, the reality is, we put in there 455.6 lane miles a street, because that more or less reflects the widths of the street that we have and the plowing we have on the snow routes. In addition to these streets, there's 20 miles of alleys, we have, the annual average snowfall is 30 inches, and the average annual salt usage the last 10 years has been approximately 300 tons per year. The central business district is top priority, is the emergency snow routes. There's 59 cul-de-sacs, and these are done with loaders, and we have the snow pushers, we had one last year, we have two in the budget for this fall. Our Street Division personnel consist of 23 people, that includes the supervisors and the secretary, and we have approximately 24 units of equipment that are used to move the snow and ice. And we get additional help from the public works, parks, and public work sector when we need. One change this year that I might add is that we have two additional plow trucks that are in reserve, and I've visited with Dennis Watts, and if their workload permits even on, when we're not going to the Phase Two, where we have a B shift and an A shift, that we will utilize these two vehicles to help speed up the process. On page two, it states the officials in charge, the street superintendent and his duties, the city administrator, and the police chief, those are all listed there. On page three, the storm warning and alert procedure, it says that the street superintendent should keep a close eye on the weather. I remember back in the mid 80s when we had, the only thing we had was the National Weather Service, and we had a DTN machine that was, the dish was on our roof, and that was quite a thing. Nowadays, we have various websites and stuff that we can check the weather. I believe there's three North American and six European models that they, that the weather services reflect, so you can get a variety of what you're looking for. Normally, I work real closely with the staff, we monitor the weather, and then I visit with the Public Safety Director, Shane Widener. We decide what operations, if it's more than six inches, we'll go to the A shift and the B shift, and if it's less than that, we can easily manage a six-inch storm within a 14-hour workday without going to those shifts. The central business district, they always start at two, they're plowed out, and then there's a private contractor that we hire with the trucks, and our blower blows that out. On page four, the chemical abrasive and spreading, the salt dome has been full, we started filling that back in late August, I believe, September. The staff gets all the equipment ready, starting in September. We've already had our meetings, assignments are issued, and the areas are assigned and stuff, so we have three granular spreaders and four brine inserts. We have a stainless steel brine machine that is capable of making 6,000 gallons per hour, and we have two storage tanks that hold a total of 20,000 gallons of salt brine, and we have one 10,000 gallon storage for GeoMelt, the liquid de-icer that is made from beet juice. And then on the bottom of the page there, you'll see the no-salt streets for this season. Most of those are new construction, and we do have some where we did extensive panel replacement, and we decided to stay off of those. Page five, six, seven, and eight are just the out, I guess it's just the definition of what snow route number one is, snow route number two, three, and four. And page nine, we have the details, the city is divided up into 10 sections, we have 13 plows, if we don't have the two extras, there's three floaters, and those three floaters will run tandem with others, so as we get to the next page, I'll get to that later, I guess. As we begin the 2020 season, the first snow operation will be number three this fall, and that goes to the corresponding chart, I believe on page, page 14. Let's see, number 10, it describes the snow hauling out of the central business district. One thing that we're not certain of this year, there was a lot of discussion on Bosh Avenue, since it was narrowed down, it'll be a challenge, to say the least, to where to put the windrow, and then have the snow blower, and then the trucks running out there, so they're going to probably take up the full width of the street, removing that on there, so it's wherever they store the windrow, in what lane, it might minimize traffic down there until we get that pulled out. The bottom of page 10 has a sidewalk snow removal. It's the property owner's responsibility within 24 hours after this cessation of snow. And then page 11 and 12 are the special and miscellaneous assignments. One thing I'll point out on this is that it goes into where we might have to move slush and ice off of the streets. This, a lot of times, we don't get the temperature to do this till either noon or afterwards, so we may be working evenings to plow this off. It does save us on de-icing material and stuff like that, if we can get the slush off the street and get back to dry pavement. So the problem with that is, and it outlined it here, is that we may leave wet icy snow in the gutter lines and across driveways, and it may freeze up, so. Page 13 is just a kind of an internal memo, it's the name of all the players, our suppliers and vendors and outside help that we need. And then page 14 is, again, the sequence of snowing plow operations. This chart here has been in use since the map was made around the late 70s or 80s. In some ways, it holds the way it is, but again, I said we had floaters, we may have two plows that run Section E or Section F. What that does, it allows those areas to be cleared out twice as fast if we run tandem, it speeds up the process, so when they get done, they'll break off and they'll help somebody else, so this chart, at the end of a snow removal operations, we go through the office, through the radios, and then we assign trucks where we need them, and so it, one area may be the last on, say, number four and B, where it'll be plowed out by separate trucks, different trucks that have already finished their areas. And then the last 14 pages, I believe, are maps that correspond with all of the descriptions on the snow routes and the salting areas, so. With that, it's largely unchanged from last year, the only thing that has changed is the players. We've had, we've got new guys that have been, and I might just, if I could take this chance to mention a couple players that we had. Jeff Christensen was a 20-year-plus employee with us, and he had an accident last fall, it resulted in his death, so we had to replace him, we lost a 20-year veteran there. Gerald Ashy was also one of our employees, he retired last November, and he just recently passed away at his home, so, not that we work people to death, but we certainly miss those guys and their talents and the efforts that they gave to us, so. Okay, if you have any questions, I would certainly answer any, or you're all ready for snow.
We've had a little bit already, so, no.
That's what we were thinking, maybe a week.
Well, we did have a test run with that.
Yeah.
We run the snow routes on that, and we didn't get into the areas because we knew that there was going to be melting and stuff, so every storm is unique, every plowing operation is different, we do the best that we can, and some people aren't happy with it, they, as soon as we get down the street, they're out there with their blower, filling in what we just plowed off, so.
Well, we know it can be a thankless job, but I was glad to hear about additional plows this year. I think in recent years, some reforms and extra resources has led to good outcomes from the division in clearing more snow more quickly, so I know it's been noticed in the community, and we're going to keep up that momentum.
Well, we're flexible when we start, too, but we still have to take into consideration the hours that the crew put in if we, if we don't activate the B crew, and we start in early evening, if we finish up, it, y'all play it by ear, it just, like I said, everything, every storm is unique, and we just do the best with what we got.
Thank you, Mark. Any other questions or comments? Thank you. Okay, with that, we are concluded. This meeting of the Norfolk City Council is adjourned. Good evening.